I have 7:31 PM and I hereby call to order the March 2017 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Folks out there watching on TV, I just want to say this is going to be a bit more of a... Not informal, but we're going to have to do some work and discussion here that we didn't get done in our previous hour of the workshop, so...
Enjoy.
You'll get to see behind the curtains a little bit, enjoy. We begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
So the clerk's office, there were 543 trash tags sold. The deputy clerk attended one zoning board appeals meeting and two payrolls were processed. For an upcoming event, we've got our village elections next Tuesday, March 21st. The voters will be voting for one mayor and two trustee positions. Elections are Tuesday, March 21st at the Tivoli Firehouse from 12 to 9 PM. That following evening, Wednesday, March 22nd, at 6 PM on the third floor here of Village Hall, our Dutchess County Executive, Marcus Molinaro, will provide a town hall forum on the 2017 state of the county. You will hear an overview of the 2017 state of the county, participate in an open conversation with County Executive Molinaro. You'll be able to share your feedback about the issues which are very important to you and to your families. Again, that will be on Wednesday, March 22nd at 6 PM, third floor of Village Hall. And as you're going through town on separate bulletin boards, you'll be seeing this to give you a reminder about the event. And I believe that sums up the office.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. I will add to that, also on Election Day, Tuesday, the 21st, we're having a tree talk upstairs on the third floor, so you can go vote and then come learn about trees. Time, I'm skipping my head right now, it's 6 or 7, but it's posted on the village calendar on the website. You can go and just got the correct time there. We're having a certified arborist come in and he'll be doing a general talk and fielding questions. This is sponsored by the Village Tree Committee. And one of the topics that we're going to ask him to address is the infamous Tivoli clay soil. And, you know, can you really make a tree grow in this stuff? So, tree talk also here at the Village Hall, Tuesday, the 21st. And moving on through the agenda to approval of the minutes. Trustees, you can see in your binders, we've got February 15th, regular board meeting minutes, and March 8th, workshop minutes. So I know this was distributed this afternoon. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Schneider followed by deputy mayor Major. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Moving on to a treasurer's report. This month, out of the general funds, the A Fund, we spent $37,839.75. Out of the water fund, the F Fund, $4,069.89. Out of the sewer fund, G Fund, $2,894.85. For a grand total of $44,804.49. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Azrati followed by Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the treasurer's report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
That was made by trustee Schneider and seconded by the deputy mayor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can pay the bills. Zoning report, do we have the annual report? Is that in here?
It's in the trustees section.
Okay.
As we were calling the first one.
Yep, yes.
As we announced in the last couple of months, things are changing around here, but what we have for you tonight, and I'll throw this to trustee Azrati, this is the annual report, which we get once a year, obviously.
Yeah, this is from the Steve Cole and Bob Fennell of the Red Hook zoning and building office. And it is listed as both Town of Red Hook, building permits issued, inspections, et cetera, and the Village of Tivoli. I'll share with you the information from the Village of Tivoli. Thirty-one building permits for issue. We don't have 31 new buildings, but that includes all kinds of building activities. Fifty-two building inspections were conducted, certificates of occupancy and/or compliance were issued for 32 projects. Complaints received and dealt with, 26. And total fees collected from building permits, $9,269. And municipal searches were $1,025. For a total revenue offsetting what we paid that group of $10,394.
Thank you trustee Azrati, and thank you to the gentleman around for getting us our annual report. Do we need to accept that, or?
I...
Just read it.
We can accept the report, yeah.
Is there a motion to accept this report for the annual zoning and building activity? That was the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the report is accepted. Looks like we'll skip over a public comment on agenda items and... Pan the room here so that they know I'm not making this up. And we'll get right into regular business. So trustees, first thing we have are some budget modifications. And we haven't gotten to discuss these, so I'm going to slow the meeting down and go through it now. You'll see on the right column, these are the lines which went over. Not by a whole lot. Trustee Azrati, we looked at the planning line. You read that invoice, so that was for...
Yeah, that was for, remember with the Greenway halfway, we had a number of secret reviews and we asked the planning board to determine whether those plans were consistent with the local waterfront revitalization program. And so our planner, Michelle Gregg...
Had a lot of reviewing to do there.
Had a lot of reviewing to help those boards with that project.
Yeah. And, well, obviously, court clerk, that's pretty minor. Obviously, the big one here is financial. That, about $4,000 of that is our annual software payment.
It is. Which helps the treasurer do her job, these things.
Yes, and the budget officer plan.
Yeah.
But we should be mindful when we do the next budget that we get that $4,000 every year so that we don't find ourselves doing a budget modification of this amount this late next year.
Yeah, so before I ask you a question...
$4,000.
About $44.84, change?
Yeah, $44.84, yeah. And then the other expenditures to this line are when we bring in Ms. Zdorsky, our consultant. But most of it is that software payment. And as far as the lines to modify to cover these overages, you know, we still have a little bit of contingency there. I've used very little of the executive line. And we have quite a bit of money in the interning line with two months left in the year. So frankly, there were not many places to go. And so, there it is. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of these proposed budget modifications?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you want to have any further discussion? Certainly appropriate if we are only looking at these just now.
Central data processing.
I was afraid someone was going to ask me that. That's why you're the deputy mayor. Central data processing...
It covers WebJogger, which is on wireless, also the access to Outlook, email, the villages, and why Tivoli, and why got all of emails, and also the wireless and WebJogger there.
Especially internet access, so of course.
Very good. One of the ideas, one of the working on the new budget is to create a budget glossary. Right? So we can do that as we go along. Because even when you learn it a year later, you may not remember it and I think it'd be useful for...
They're not terribly descriptive.
Right, sometime. And it's hard to tell from what's on, which one's out. And we always have to look it up. So let's look it up in the glossary that we make for ourselves so we can do that. So keep notes as we proceed. With that discussion, let's see, I bet I've got a roll call in here, don't I? Perhaps not. We'll just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That's the budget modifications. Moving on to our second resolution tonight. Authorizing an agreement with Computel Consultants for streetlight audit service. And if you turn through your binders, I think we spoke about this two weeks ago or a week ago at the workshop. So you may have heard, a lot of municipalities are looking into and buying their own light fixtures from Central Hudson, which gives them greater control over what kind of fixture it is, what sort of, you know, is it LED? Kingston, I know, has moved ahead with this. The Town of Red Hook is moving ahead. I think our green committee has done a lot of research on this and is interested. A first step which has value whether we proceed or not is a billing audit of our streetlights. So this company, Computel, can look back through six years of our bills to Central Hudson and they look for inconsistencies and inaccuracies. If they find any, they take a cut of what they find. Now, I know I spoke with Mayor Blundell, they did this in the Village of Red Hook. They found no inconsistencies, so I'm afraid they didn't get paid anything from Red Hook. So we don't have to lay out any funds for this. If they find that we are owed a refund, they take a 40%. But it's one of the first steps if we want to own our own streetlights. And obviously, if we've been incorrectly billed, it's good to know that, whether we let Central Hudson keep them or not. Right? So that's the proposal. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing an agreement with Computel Consultants for streetlight audit service.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Azrati followed by Major. We'll do a roll call here. Deputy mayor Major? Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you very much. The resolution's passed and we will engage Computel tomorrow. And it'll be interesting to see what they find. Next resolution. Approving amendment to Tivoli LoSAP investment policy. For a little background and discussion, we've spent an hour on this last week. But trustee Azrati, would you like to recap what we're doing here?
Basically, the LoSAP program invests the awards that the village gives to firefighters who have earned 15 points or more. And those points are earned by attending fire incidents and going to meetings and serving on the board of the fire department and going to training exercises, those kinds of things. We have accumulated about $135,000 in that fund today. And there are 22, 23 eligible firefighters who each have individual funds that are funded by that amount. The age of those firefighters, we've retired out a bunch of them and distributed those funds. So the remaining funds are for firefighters who are younger, which gives us time to absorb some ups and downs in the market. And therefore, we have, at the advice of our wealth manager, decided to increase the percentage of equity holdings in the portfolio and reduce the percentage of bonds to a 55%, 45% holding, which will be invested largely through exchange traded funds, which are very, for this relatively small portfolio, they're a cost effective way to achieve this market exposure.
And we've spoken with the members of the Tivoli Fire Company and they're in favor of this allocation?
They are in favor of this, yes.
Very good. Is there a motion adopting the resolution approving amendment to Tivoli LoSAP investment policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No.
Right here. Did that come from? That was you? Okay, so that was Schneider and deputy mayor on further confirmation. Roll call vote, please. Deputy mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you very much. Number four, resolution authorizing parking restrictions during bridge construction. So, the bridge coming in on Broadway, Dutchess County is going to fix it. And they may begin as early as late April. It's the last update we've had. We in the village were under the impression it was going to happen a little bit later in the year, towards June. But for whatever reason, they're now saying late April, early May, certainly into May. This obviously is going to be a tremendous disruption to life here in the village. Well worth it in order to replace that 86-year-old bridge. I hope everyone attended that presentation from the county a year ago, but don't worry, the bridge is going to be re-clad in stone and have historic lampposts and it's going to be a little bit wider, safer, stronger, brand new, and yet not lose its historic character. I want to thank Dutchess County for being so open to the village's requirement that it stay historic. We were inflexible and so we appreciate their flexibility. However, during that period, there's going to be a formal detour from 9G westward along Kidd Lane, northward up Montgomery Street. Those of us familiar with Montgomery Street currently has east side parking in most stretches and currently, it's very difficult for two vehicles to pass. So imagining that being the main thoroughfare in and out of the village, fire trucks, county loop bus, Bard College shuttle, delivery trucks, school buses. It's too narrow. So what we are going to have to do, in the interest of the public safety, is forbid any on-street parking along Montgomery Street during the bridge construction. We can do that with this resolution. We're going to, you know, this is the first time we're telling folks, tell your friends and neighbors, we are going to be advertising this, but there will be no parking from whatever period the detour begins until it's complete. And, you know, we appreciate everyone's cooperation. We understand the inconvenience, but there's just no way we can use that artery for our traffic if we keep the current parking configuration, so.
It's safety and it's also the moving traffic, the flow of traffic as well. Because if something happens, it's going to be backed up and...
Absolutely.
We'll have traffic until maybe...
Yeah.
Nobody else.
Yeah.
But also the safety is...
But we're very much looking forward to the bridge project and having that bridge finished in, well, late summer, early fall, weather permitting. But what we're going to do to help out the county is change the parking on Montgomery Street during that period is their motion to adopt this resolution authorizing parking restrictions during bridge construction.
Yes.
I have a motion from the deputy mayor, who lives on Montgomery Street.
My grudging...
It's for the big picture.
Big picture.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Murphy? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Deputy mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And we will try and get the word out early, far and wide about that so people can plan ahead and, you know, make sure they can get their cars off the street, think about another place to park, get it in the garage, what have you. All right, moving on to number five. Resolution accepting and awarding a contract for the Village of Tivoli wastewater treatment plant, clarifier tank, repainting project.
Yeah.
So this is another one where I'd like to workshop it for a minute here so we can just review where we are before we vote. The village has been told by the DEC for some time that the clarifier tanks, which are part of the sewage treatment process, are aged and they're painted steel, so that paint is failing, there's some rust coming through. It is not an option for us not to address it. The process is to, there are pairs of tanks. You take one side offline, empty the other one completely. Contractors go in there, sandblast it all, capture all the paint chips and the sand...
Debris.
Debris. And if there's any spot welding or anything, then you've got that one done. Repaint it, recode it, switch it over, do the other one. So we thought about doing it in-house. It's much too big a job for our three gentlemen, as capable as they are. So we worked with our engineering firm, Crawford and Associates, to do a formal bidding. The amount expected was going to exceed our procurement requirement for formal bidding of $35,000. We ended up seeing two responses. And trustees, if you look just after the resolution, a couple pages, you'll see a recommendation letter from Crawford and Associates in which they say we were contracted by a total of six contracts, we were contacted by six contractors. However, due to the size and scope of the project, the number of interested contractors appears to be limited. Typically, a minimum of three bids is preferred. However, given the level of interest and the number of contractors contacted, Crawford and Associates feels that it is appropriate for the village to award to the lowest responsible bidder. We've received two bid packages back. You'll see the amounts there. One amount, $54,900. And the second amount, almost three times, $134,395. So this is why you have procurement policies and get multiple bids and chop around because they're quite different.
Did we only get two out of six contractors to bid because it's a small job or because it's a large job?
Because it's a small job.
I see.
You know, unfortunately, again, we are under pressure from the DEC to get this done. And so we've done our effort to get the best value and this is what we have, so.
Tell me about the contingency fund. That seems to be common.
Is that on the back of the recommendation letter?
It's in the summary. Says that the bid is for $54,900 with the contingency fund up 20%. I could do a half.
Yeah, I think in almost every formal bid of this magnitude, there's always a 20% contingency. I see that. I know that we have one on our CDBG Pine Street, so I think it's very typical.
So this is for any anticipated issues.
Great. I think it's important to note as well, though, even in the Crawford and Associates letter, that TEC has visited the site to get a better understanding of the scope of the work for the project. So hopefully, that will help minimize any unforeseen costs associated with that contingency budget. That being said, we know that sometimes they'll drop up. Impossible to see what's under all that paint at the moment, so.
Okay, and so is the $54,900 built into the $54,900? I would say yes.
Yeah, it includes.
Okay, so it could be inside six, five, perhaps.
No, I'm saying, in the contract amount of $54,900 with the contingency. I believe it's in. We can also open this up. Is this TEC? So, this is what our workshops are like. So we will go through here and look for contingency. Okay, that's non-collision. I like those. Let's see, so sandblasting one, 32, sandblasting two, 28. A pair of thickness. So I think that according to this, the way I read it, it looks like it's not including that 20.
I don't think it is.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The $54,900 is their bid for the job.
But they bid through, what is it, changes of order?
Right, where changes.
Raised it slightly, less 20%.
Right, or $10,100.
But it needs to be done and they're still one bit past the...
Right.
And again, I'm really confident in the fact that they visited the site on a pre-bid inspection to get a better idea of the scope there, so.
And so Crawford receives this project?
Yes. Yep, they will make sure that these folks do what they're offering to do. All right, so resolution authorizing the award of the bid for the wastewater treatment plant, tank repainting project two, TEC, protective coatings incorporated, in the amount of $54,900 for the project, which has been determined to be the lowest responsible bid for such work specified in the specifications on file with the clerk. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
That was made by trustee Schneider and seconded by trustee Murphy. Any further discussion?
No, I think it's good that we're addressing this.
Yes, absolutely. Roll call vote, please. Deputy mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
And trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So congratulations to TEC and thank you to Crawford and Associates. Number six. Submission of the 2017-2018 tentative budget to the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. So I, as budget officer, am obligated by a certain date to submit to the clerk a tentative budget that is then submitted to the trustees. I submitted that this afternoon. It was duly stamped and received. And I believe clerk Bruno has the tentative budget for the board.
I do. You all are the also very fortunate recipients.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We share this one. It's got all the other extras in there.
I just put a responsibility of purpose in there.
Yes. So, and I believe the deadline for my submission to you is the 20th, right?
Correct.
Yep, so we're ahead and you've received the budget. That'll be recorded in the minutes. And that's a perfect segue to number seven on our agenda tonight, which as every year, we set up a number of extra budget workshops to dedicate to this. The process is the trustees will review the tentative budget, make whatever changes they feel are appropriate. They can pose questions to the budget officer, treasurer, try and answer them so that the board really knows what they're allocating. Again, a budget is sort of a best guess. And if you've, fans of the village board will know that every month, we do modifications because it is a best guess and things come up and things change. So we need to find some dates and this will be a workshop moment. We also have to have a required public hearing by the 15th of April. Because the 19th is the reorg and oaths and state of the village. I'm hoping that we can do that. Public hearing on the 12th.
Sounds good.
And I'm proposing, and please tell me your schedules and whatnot, I would propose that we set up now a workshop on March 29th, April 5th, and then a final one on April 29th. that we set up now a workshop on March twenty-ninth, April fifth, and then a final one on April twenty-sixth. We do need to approve a final budget by May first, which is why I sort of have that last one in there, but how are people's availability on the twenty-ninth of March?
Would this be an issue?
Yeah, I mean, we can do it at six, we can do it at seven. I hope we don't need all this time, but, you know, we have to schedule formally.
Schedule just in case.
Yeah, so, which we only get to do all of it together, and...
I think it's necessary, I mean, Wednesday is a standard meeting, night, granted, only twice a month for us anyway, so I think that it weighs too much.
We can proceed with the forum if someone is unable to, you know, there will be opportunities for everyone to give their two cents, so. Are we comfortable with March twenty-ninth, April fifth? We will eventually schedule a public hearing on the twelfth, which is a regular workshop, and then schedule one more budget workshop on the twenty-sixth of April.
So, good luck.
That will be fine, I think that, just so you are aware, the Northern Dutchess Coalition has rescheduled their typical meetings and changed them to the fourth Wednesday in an effort to have one of the board members that may attend their meeting, so I think that there might be some conflict there, but, yeah, budget workshops are a...
Yeah, we could also tinker with the hour.
Okay, okay.
That sounds like good, that's fair.
I hope that at that point we're just meeting to vote, and if it makes the deadline, I...
That would be really great.
So, you're talking April fifth, I'm sorry, what was the third one?
So, March twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, fifth.
April fifth, April twenty-sixth, and do we want, we want to set some times, we'd like six PM, seven PM? I think seven, because it's lighter later now, but we could do six? Six, seven, seven? All right, we're going to say, we are now, well, here, I can do this. Is there a motion to set the following budget workshop schedule? March twenty-ninth, seven PM, April fifth, seven PM, April twenty-sixth, seven PM.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was the deputy mayor, followed by trustee Murphy. Any further discussion? I just want to thank you all for giving the extra time. Obviously, the budget is the key to everything else we get to do for the residents of this village. I think, I did not submit a budget letter with this tentative budget, but I'll just tell you that there's good news insofar as some of our debts have rolled off, so there's a little more money. You know, I think at least this year is not going to be as dire as a couple of years ago. Also, the tax cap is, it feels like it's huge after dealing with some of the tight ones, but I, in this tentative budget, we are staying under the cap, which this year is one point five.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's close to point zero one two.
It's actually a little bit over five thousand dollars, which compared to two years ago, when it was a little under five hundred, is huge.
May I ask, a public hearing on the twelfth, the time would that be?
We're not going to set the public hearing tonight.
Okay.
I imagine we'll set it at the, either the twenty-ninth or the fifth, at that other workshop. Because when we set the public hearing, we have to have our draft tentative budget sort of static for time. So, this, this schedule lets us work on it.
Okay.
And then we say, okay, this is what we really want, because, you know, right now it's got my input, not so much all of yours. Then we'll get there, then we schedule a public hearing, that draft goes on the website, people can come in and read it, and then we have a public hearing so that we're not, like, changing it on them as we go.
Yes.
So, you might want to clarify for viewers whether or not the budget workshops will be open to the public?
They are open to the public, all meetings of the village board are open to the public, yes. Each and every one. Tonight, we're not doing so well, but that's all right. Never know who's going to wander in.
A little more interest.
Yeah, the public's been shoveling all day. So, we still need to vote on that schedule, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, thank you, and we've set our budget workshop schedule. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, April nineteenth, at seven PM, preceded by a workshop at six PM here at the Historic Lots of Paister Hall. That night will also be the annual reorganizational meeting of the village board of trustees, the ceremonial votes of office of newly elected and appointed officials, and the State of the Village address, and the presentation of the citizen awards. So, it'll be a full night on April nineteenth, and we will also have a workshop on April twelfth, the week before, at seven PM. Moving on to committee reports, trustee Azrati?
Well, as the low staff coordinator, I would like to thank the village board for their attention to our wealth manager, who came to our workshop last week, and the good questions that they asked and that we're moving forward with this shift and new policy. I don't have really anything to say about the fire department this month.
They had a great breakfast.
Which I missed. The water and sewer, let's take a look at the water reports. The, I always let you know what the wells have been doing, the Ballot well was not pumping in the month of January, or in the month of February, the McKnight well was pumping at, it's a custom rate which is close to ten thousand gallons per day. The Two Pots West well was on for most of the month at about twelve thousand gallons per day. The Five Pots West was off. The Four PE and Ten PE wells were pumping at about seventeen thousand, just under seventeen thousand gallons per day. And the Woodmark wells were pumping at a little below what their usual capacity is, at about twenty-five to twenty-six thousand gallons a day. So, the total pumping of the wells was around sixty-three, sixty-four thousand gallons per day, and the water tower stayed at its usual height of about sixty-five feet. The reason for that water shower, one of the reasons for that, as we've been discussing, our water system of light, is to provide the pressure, which gives you a nice shower in the morning, so keep that in mind, that that is one of its functions. For some reason, our rain numbers for the last two months have been explicit, so I can't even ask her if you know, because I don't know.
We'll do two next, two guesses next month.
There we go.
I'd like to say four point eight three inches anyway.
Okay.
Somebody's looking at it.
We had a power outage in this period for six hours, which, I'm going to ask the mayor how does that affect the water system, I guess it affects the sewer system, right? Because it doesn't pump the sludge from one tank to another.
Well, it makes it difficult to pump water to the storage tank, but the storage tank does the electricity.
Ah.
That's back to your gravity.
Back to the gravity, okay.
Can't do it forever, but that's the reason we've got a hundred fifty thousand gallons sitting up there.
Yeah, and the good news is that we didn't have any water outbreaks in the month of February. And water quality tested well.
Great. Thank you, trustee Azrati, trustee Schneider, please.
All right, so the Village of Tivoli Justice Court report for the month of February, just getting through this, every single violation that they dealt with was no overnight parking. So, these are tickets that were originally incurred anywhere from November through February. Total charges received were eight, charges disposed were fourteen. Money collected and remitted to the state comptroller totaled four hundred and twenty-five dollars. But looking at these charges here, it's just a reminder for anyone who needs a parking permit to avoid these no overnight parking tickets and fees, you can obtain one by visiting Robin in the clerk's office.
And the permits cost how much?
The permits are forty dollars.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Excuse me, I'm blanking momentarily here.
Less than...
Less than...
We've got to review the dates because it is something kind of that they wouldn't need one.
Right, it's April first, so until April first, you still need to stay off the streets overnight between one and six.
And maybe later, given the weather. The weather events, I don't know if you ever had a snowstorm in April?
Do you really want to invite them?
Yes, sure.
I'm really sure.
Trustee Murphy, please.
I'd like to thank trustee Schneider for her help meeting with the parents in the village discussing the summer rec program. I think we're coming together pretty well, logistically putting together with forms we have to fill out with the Department of Health to get our rec program up and running again, hopefully breaking out into smaller groups to kind of address certain things. We're kind of leaning towards having it in August, but it's two or three weeks, still has to be decided. We're leaning towards a full day, nine to three, nine to five, and we're trying to include as many ages as we can in it. We're also trying to decide a small fee associated to build the program, might be great for kids, so.
So, we took last summer off to sort of regroup, and is it fair to say there's going to be something this summer?
I believe there is going to be something.
We'll make you proud of that. It's looking good?
It is looking good.
It is looking very promising.
Great, well, thank you both for doing that, it was hard to take a summer off, and don't want to lose momentum, and I know the work you two are doing, and a lot of input from the parents, it's like momentum's coming back, just like we hoped that pause would allow us to do it.
I think it's a great opportunity, Chris did a really great job leading, meeting that forum with all the parents to try to suss out the real needs and the concerns around the rec program, and to design one that would actually be something that parents want their children to participate in, as opposed to, you know, just a program for them to have something to do, you know, this is...
And something that is also very reflective of the people in the village.
And trustee Murphy and I met at Summer Rec.
Many moons ago.
Somewhere in the eighties, we won't say which year exactly, but, so, you know, I certainly still have friendships from that program with my fellow Tivoli kids that, you know, they lived all the way across the village, I might not have known them, they were on that other bus, so, you know, we really hope to bring the rec program back, and I'm sure if any parents have questions or ideas, they can get in touch with you.
Yeah, please do me.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Major?
You are all spared my usual rambling report tonight, and I will be presenting it in writing to the clerk for inclusion for three minutes.
Very good, very good.
But if you want to say, the library is of course doing fabulous things at all, so check their website for details.
And there was a very successful presentation on Wordman and the Historic Hall.
Thanks, Susan.
And thank you, Emily, I know we'll get that into Robin. Well, obviously, we'd like to talk about the snowstorm we just had, I hope everyone is safe and played it smart. I want to let people know from the mayor's desk what a tremendous amount of information and support I received and this village received from the county, from the county executive, Marcus Malinaro. He held at least four phone conferences about every so many hours, starting yesterday morning, and the final one was even this morning. In those conference calls, you've got, you know, the county executive, either DeeDee Barrett or her representative, Sue Serrino, her representative, county emergency response, Captain Waterston, and every mayor and supervisor in this county, we're all on the same conference call, we're getting the best data from emergency management, the best forecasts, and notifications of what's going on. I did not have to declare a state of emergency here in the village because the county had declared one, which covered anything that I felt may have been needed, namely, no traveling on the public roads. That was in effect early yesterday until four AM last night, and, you know, that's so that the first responders and the snowplows can do what they have to do. And the other executive order from the county executive was no parking on any public roadway. That only ended it for this afternoon, we'll see how many folks keep up with those orders, however. I can't stress the importance, I was out yesterday with our own DPW who were tremendous, you know, the stress on our equipment and on our personnel was extreme, they performed admirably as always, but when I rode around with them and just keeping the snow open enough, the roads open enough, that were there a 911 call on that street, you know, folks say, oh, what's the point, you know, could have waited till the end of the storm. Well, you never know, and if an ambulance has to get down Lothrup, we got to do our best, so we did that. I want to remind residents that they are responsible for the sidewalks in front of their house, to get those cleared, I know it's difficult, but it is your responsibility, and also, fire hydrants near your house, if you're the closest one, shovel those out. Imagine, you know, buried under a four-foot drift, frozen, and your house catches on fire, you got to, got to get it opened up. Are you signaling me something?
They're out, the fire department's out tonight, we're doing a lot of...
Right, oh, well, yep, so, they're going to come in and rescue your family and save your property, the least you can do is keep that fire hydrant clear of snow.
Now, is there a particular timeframe that residents need to be aware of for shoveling that walkway in front of their homes?
It's twenty-four hours after the end of the snowfall, which I think was about nine last night, before the snow stopped, so. We apologize for the delay in garbage and recycling, but snow, snow is more important, getting the roads cleared is obviously just a public safety issue, and the guys will be around tomorrow to pick up your garbage and recycling, and also throughout the storm, I was updating the village website, so putting the county's updates on there, and also information about, you know, when are you going to pick up my recycling? So, unlike our previous website, this one is a bit dynamic, and you can look to that, you know, during a storm like yesterday, and, you know, fortunately, we didn't lose power, but we are trying to sort of provide you up-to-date information. And once again, I just want to thank the county executive and everyone at Dutchess County for letting me know and Tivoli know that, you know, we were not alone in this, and again, thanks to our Department of Public Works. Does the village board have any other business or things to discuss?
Just to encourage all of you who had your roads cleared by this wonderful village deputy, to get out on Tuesday and vote.
And also, get out and hug the DPW guys when you see them.
Or give them snacks, that might help.
Very good. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
To vote.
A motion was made by trustee Schneider, seconded by the deputy mayor, all in favor? It is eight twenty, we are adjourned, thanks, folks.